Go ahead.
Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJ SA 10:4-6 at sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, please take the roll.
Mr. Jaskiewicz.
Here.
Mr. Kaplan.
Here.
Mr. Musarella.
Here.
Mr. Parek.
Here.
Mr. Reddy.
Roger.
And Snyder.
Here.
And Mr. Williams.
Here.
We also have left us our board planner, Mr. Chadwick, our board engineer, Mr. Hawley, and our board attorney, Mr. King.
All right, thank you. At this time, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, we will open the meeting to the public. If anyone has business to bring before the board that is not on tonight's agenda, now is the time to do so. Seeing no one come forward, I will close that portion of the meeting. All right, we have some resolutions. However, we are removing 2163 Chick-fil-A, and we are also removing 2219 50 Lackawanna Avenue. Just to hold those for the next meeting. Can I get, we can bulk approve these? Can I have someone make a motion?
So moved.
Captain Jaskiewicz.
Thank you. Nora? Or do we just, all those in favor?
Are you all allowed to vote on the bulk?
I believe so.
Okay.
The one was the same.
Sounds good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Takes care of that. At this time, we will be approving also the meeting schedule for the 2023 calendar, January through December. Anyone have any questions, issues? We're good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that's done. Uh, and we are on to the agenda for tonight. We are gonna carry, yeah, we're gonna carry...
Well, wait, are we gonna have them come up first, or will you just go into?
Is 2145 here?
Yeah, do you want to call them up?
I think we should call them up.
Yeah, okay. So we'll start with 2238. Patel.
47 Rockaway Boulevard.
Now, is it a translator or a turn? Okay, you're the applicant. You're the engineer. All right. So, just for the record, we had conversation, there was an issue with engineering review, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and you wanted to just tell the board what you're going to do, and you're gonna, it's not gonna be any testimony, it's just procedurally what you're going to do as it relates to this application. All right?
My name is Stanley Huang, Licensed Engineer in New Jersey. Served 30 years in the other city municipal engineer, retired six years ago.
Could you speak into the microphone, please? Pick up the microphone, please.
You guys should sit down.
My name is Stanley Huang.
You can pull it out.
Yeah, my name is Stanley Huang. I've been Licensed Engineer in New Jersey, serving 30 years in the other city municipal government, for 30 years, and retired six years ago. Anyway, I was here last year to, for this case, and as we present a resolution for this solution for the water case, it was kind of denied because we did not obtain the confirmation from the municipal engineer. So this year, I was again request to come and present this case. Very fortunately, I have a meeting on site with Paul, the engineer, and his assistant around 3 o'clock, and for at least half an hour, walk around the site and try to figure out a solution for whatever the problem that we have, which is the water pounding in the backyard. And last year, when we present a case, after recommended by engineer and find environmental engineer, design a solution, which called a dry well in the backyard. And that's what we presented last year. But we presented without the, you know, concurrence of engineer, so we were told, go back and then discuss with him before we come back. So yesterday, after we talked about it, how to resolve the issue, he said, no, you don't do that. It's a violation. We were told to have engineer to design a solution, dry well, and then pump the water out. He said, you are not allowed to pump the water out from the private lot into the public street, public right away. Because in the wintertime, when the water reached to the street, it become ice, it's create a hazardous for the pedestrian, for the vehicular traffic. Unless you have a pipe constructed all the way underground and to the city street, which will be at least 50 feet in the yard and 50 feet on the city street, that's become a cost prohibited for individual to do that type of work. So his suggestion is that you are allowed to, when the water enter into the basement, you are allowed to pump it out, but the pipe cannot extend anywhere within your property limit 10 foot. That's all you can spit out into your own property, 10 foot away from the property limit. In other word, you cannot spit out to the next door neighbor and forget about, dump the water into the public street. So you cannot do that. So what happened to the waters in the basement?
So you were sent back to get approval by the town engineer, and he told you?
We discussed that. He said, you are in violation if you...
So do you have any resolution to present to the board? You don't, because when I spoke to you, you said you were either going to carry this until you could come up with a solution, or you were gonna withdraw the application?
Yes. The only way we can do is to dump water into your own yard from the basement. You pump it out, but in your yard, not spit out to the...
Sir, do you have anything to present to the board that they can make a decision tonight?
The only thing I want to say is that the solution is no solution. Is we cannot do anything else except whatever the condition.
So then, what is your client gonna do? Is he going to withdraw the application?
As far as that water issue, we're gonna withdraw that.
So you're gonna withdraw the full application?
Yeah, full application.
You, you, you could draw it, but you're gonna have to take...
And here, it says, try to legalize the concrete patio and walls. Since last meeting last year, June, the concrete patio and the wall is being removed. So we don't, we don't have to worry about legalize the concrete patio and walls. That's, that's the issue was already here.
So you're withdrawing your, your application?
Yeah, because there's no issue now. And we have no way to deal with water, any other better...
And will someone be sending a letter to the, to the board secretary for her file, so she can have that in her file?
I appreciate you. Thank you.
Well, you'll be sending the letter today?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We will have it officially certified and send it to, and then we do not have to seek for another solution.
Mr. Counselor, just, just for clarification, you came before us because you were in violation of impervious coverage issues, correct? Initially, with the patio and everything?
Oh, for the patio, yes. We tried to legalize that. We removed...
You tried to legalize that, wasn't able to be legalized, so you're taking it out.
Yeah.
The water issue was a secondary issue, is that correct?
That's what we were told and what presented, was presented.
But now there's no water issue, right, as far as you're concerned, because there's no impervious coverage issue, so you don't need to be in front of us. So you're withdrawing everything. You have it right?
Yeah, withdrawing everything, basically.
Okay, great.
See it?
All right, so we're gonna, you're gonna withdraw that. Nora, I would request that someone from the zoning department just confirm everything.
And on that letter, we probably will ask municipal engineer Paul to co-sign or something that he agreed with, or he recommended.
No.
No, not he recommended.
No.
We just need proof that the issue is not there anymore.
Okay, we'll take photos to prove that.
That there is no issue with that property.
The zoning officer is gonna go out and verify. So all you need to do is send a letter that you're withdrawing, you have consent of the applicant, and they are withdrawing the requested relief.
Very clear.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Before I go, I just have to say something. I was coming in, and then the door is locked, so Nora opened the door. I said, are you Nora? Because I want to talk to her. She said, yes, I am. I said, oh, I was here, I know you were here last year. Okay. And we present a case to, I know what you presented. Wait a minute. You just see millions of people every day, and you remember me here once?
I remember you.
She's good.
I remember you.
Sure. And then she picked up a little piece of metal and dropped. This is yours?
Don't get any ideas of stealing her away from us.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Don't, 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 don't work to get her going someplace else. Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to 2145 Sunken Patel. This one will be carried, I believe, but just come on up, just make this official. Now...
Now, you're Sunken Patel, correct?
Yes.
And you've all been sworn before?
Yeah.
You understand you're still under that same oath?
He first came here May 17th, 2021. We had to carry it to January 12th. We carried it to April 6th. We carried it to July 13th, 2022. We carried it to September 14th tonight, and now we need to carry it again. Can you just explain why?
Carry it?
Why do we need to carry this again?
Uh, I don't know.
The engineer didn't confirm. You were supposed to talk to the engineer, correct? But they didn't provide any guidance. Chaz, you have some information?
Yes, I talked to Paul Nihon this afternoon, and he did not have a chance to actually go out to the site and review what was being proposed, or how to assess everything. So I talked to Nora about, we should carry it one more time, that way you have the opportunity to actually have Paul look at the site, review things with you, and the papers, and that kind of situation. Because I'm looking at the older application, and there's a side yard setback, and a rear yard setback for the shed, and the amount of impervious coverage has to be addressed. So as a board, I think we have to eventually decide if we're gonna allow those existing nonconformities for the shed. It's supposed to be 6 feet, I think it's 3 feet. And then we want something from the township engineer, what's been addressed as far as the drainage issue.
So what's stopping us from hearing and voting on the case? Is it the drainage solution?
Yes, the engineer, they were sent back to the engineer, and the engineer hasn't provided us any guidance. They haven't reviewed it. So...
Okay. When did you first approach the engineer again? Paul, the engineer, when did you talk to him about this?
Uh, right after we had the meeting.
So, in July?
Is that true?
Yes.
You spoke to him in July, and he still hasn't given you?
No.
Okay, so this is more on us than anything?
I think it was a subject of miscommunication.
Okay.
Okay.
Justin wasn't around, so Paul is like, he's handling everything.
Okay. Board, do you have any more questions? Nora, do you have another date?
Uh, yes, we're gonna give him January 25th, 2023.
I think you're the first application that's been carried through three different years.
Mr. Chair, you're very sharp in mind.
Okay.
Okay, we'll see you next year. Happy New Year.
Good luck.
I didn't realize that. You need to follow up.
Someone, yeah.
So Chaz, I mean, does Paul realize that he needs, who's reaching out to whom?
I talked to Paul, and he understood that now he has to go out there, do an assessment, and make recommendations.
I will also speak to him tomorrow. I will call him tomorrow and tell him that I need to...
Perfect. So we need some kind of written communication to the board from the engineering department on what the assessment is.
Look, can we agree that this is the last step? No, no, this is not their fault. I got that, but it's...
I already sent him the updated survey, and he did get the idea, but I don't know why he didn't...
We just need a letter from him.
Okay, no problem.
Nora, was that January 26th?
No, January 25th.
25th, all right, thank you.
Okay, and you're gonna send...
I hope I have the solution next time.
So do we.
Yeah, I need you to send a letter granting an extension. We've talked about this before. This is something, you know, you have to do. So call me tomorrow, or email me tomorrow, and I'll put it in writing, so...
And for the record, you consent to an extension of time?
Okay.
I'll explain it tomorrow. Send me an email, and I'll respond to it.
There were residents, and they're not gonna be re-notified, because there were residents interested in this application. They were sitting right there. No, they're not here today, but they were here last time, eager to testify.
When I talked to Paul, he said that was part of what he was going to do, was talk to the drainage problem.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you.
All right, on to cases. Application 2233 Philip Dallow, 132 Rainbow Trail. Come on up.
Sir, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear a firm testimony you're about to give before the board's true self, you God? And for the record, you're Philip Dallow, and you're the owner of 132 Rainbow Trail? Thank you, you're sworn. You can have a seat. You just talk into the microphone.
All right, you are here. You need a variance to construct the 72 square foot shed on a 112 foot, I guess, concrete pad. That triggered a side yard setback and impervious coverage.
That's correct.
Okay, so start with the coverage. Existing is 39, you're allowed 30. How did you get the additional 10%? What else?
We purchased the property two and a half years ago, and we haven't made any changes. So that's how we purchased the property. I think there was some grandfathering of rules back when this property was built in 98.
Okay.
I believe we have an R3 lot, and in today's time, an R3 can't be less than 15,000 square feet, and I think we're in between 12 and 13.
Did you submit a survey with this?
Yes.
Survey's in there, the webpage.
It was in the packet that Nora prepared and left on the...
No, it's not.
It's not stapled.
Yeah.
Okay, so according to the engineer's report, with respect to the impervious coverage, you're already over by 1,000 square feet, and this is gonna bring you to 1,122 square feet, and you need to provide stormwater mitigation measures. What can you share with us about that?
Can you repeat that second part?
The engineer's memo says that you need to provide us with stormwater mitigation measures. Your impervious coverage is going to create runoff problems.
Did they send you this letter?
No.
There we go.
There's a June 27, 22 letter from Justin Lisa, and he talks about what you need to do. So we just need to know that you'll comply with his letter, and his, his issues and solutions. It would be a condition of any approval of the board.
Why did you put the shed over on that area? I mean, because the area is all as too far for me to, right slopes?
Yes.
You slope down to the lake?
Yes.
How steep is it back there?
Not that steep. I would say over the 12 feet. I think I'm right around eight or nine, between six and nine inches of slope, of slope change. So there is slope, visible slope, but it's not, it's not drastic. The foundation...
The first one is a slight slope.
Why did you push it right over on the edge of your property?
Our property, as stated, is only 12,000-ish square feet, and we want to have as much space as we can. My wife and I are expecting, so we want to have as much backyard space for the little one to run around and play back there.
And that extra five feet, makes that much of a difference?
It does.
Why couldn't you put it up next to the house, and you keep your backyard all over?
Could you refer to where you're...
You got your two AC units?
Yeah, so that's, that's...
In that area, what's in there?
That's just our AC units, and that's a, that's a pretty big slope.
That's a slope?
Yeah, right there. So the flattest part of the property, to put it, is where I've, I've described. I've already talked with our neighbors next door. They're perfectly okay with it. We talked, like, kind of mapped it out where, where we're going to put it, and got their, got their formal approval.
So you're, you're gonna have, the walls of the shed will be three feet off the line? Is that correct?
Uh, I believe around two, is I, I wrote it. The foundation would be a foot off, and then the wall of the shed would be two feet off.
No, it's a foot off. It's not two feet.
Yeah, it's one foot.
Okay.
It's one foot, right.
And your neighbor has a fence, or whose fence is that?
It's my neighbor's fence.
So you can work in between, you can maintain this?
Yes.
You have a chance to read the letter?
Yes.
And you'll agree to doing what's required, if we, so grant you this variance?
Yes.
What buffers, so that there's a fence, but is there full, not so much foliage, is there a tree buffer in this area as well, to complement the fence, or is it just strictly fence?
Do you see where it says chain link fence on the left-hand side? Right around where it says chain link fence, my neighbor has a, maybe a two-foot-in-diameter tree.
How tall? Or just one tree?
One tree. It's probably as tall, as tall as my house, but maybe a little taller.
Well, okay.
The stockade is five feet, six feet?
The what?
The stockade fence is good condition?
His fence?
Yeah.
Yes. The wooden fence.
And what, was it a five foot, six foot?
Between five and six. I would say six. I would say probably five. I can, I can look over his, his property.
How much room between the shed and the fence?
Um, the way I envision it, I would have the foundation, one foot off of his, of my property line, which I believe his fence goes right up to my property line, and then...
How are you gonna maintain grass, whatever?
There's no grass. There's rocks there right now.
Okay.
And he's good with it?
Yes. Yes. It does, and we have a good report. They're, they're fine with it.
He might not know where his property lies. And what's the reason to have the concrete pad extend beyond the shed?
Uh, typically, you have one foot of, it's not concrete, it's just gonna be, it's three-quarter inch ground gravel.
Oh, it's just gravel?
It's just gravel with four-by-fours around it. They, they call for one foot minimum of around the shed. I'm trying to push that to six inches around, so seven by 13 pad.
So it's just gravel?
Gravel and a four-by, four-by-fours, pressure-treated four-by-whos to hold the shed on top. Yes, not concrete foundation.
So rainwater will go through?
Yeah.
Yes.
And what are you using the shed for?
Uh, so this will, this will be extra storage for lawn, lawn maintenance tools, snowblower, little kids' stuff, bikes. We have a two-car garage that we use our, our cars in, and our basement's finished, so we really don't have too much space within the house. And so before, you know, we have a little one, we wanted to get some extra storage.
And all these decks and stairs, you didn't build any of that?
No, no, everything you see, you can see that the last time this survey was updated was 2012, and we purchased the property 2019 in December.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? All right.
Yep.
Okay. Anyone from the public who wishes to speak in favor of this application, or who is opposed to this application? Now it's time to come up. I see nobody approaching. All right, have a recommendation?
Yeah, I think it's the minimis in nature. I think the gentleman is gonna adhere to whatever the engineer required. His neighbor doesn't care, so I'll be voting yes.
All right. Someone like to frame the resolution?
I will. An application 22:33 Philip Dallow, 132 Rainbow Trail, block 112, lot 7, zone R3. We granted a C variance to construct a shed on the foundation pad contrary to section 430-35, columns 8 and 13, provided that he meets all guidelines mapped out by the township engineer.
Second, Jaskiewicz.
All right, Nora?
Mr. Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Mr. Kaplan.
Yes.
Mr. Musarella.
Yes.
Mr. Parek.
Yes.
Mr. Reddy.
Yes.
Mr. Snyder.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
All right, the application passes. You can see Nora next week, right?
Speak of two weeks.
Give her two weeks.
Or, or following meeting. It's more than two weeks. We have a meeting after that.
Our next meeting is next week, isn't it?
I don't know if a week's enough for the resolution to get out.
Not next meeting, but the meeting after that. We'll vote on the resolution, on the resolution, and you'll be good to proceed.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, next application, 2241 Kevin Long, 5 McClintock Place.
So you raised your, you're represented by council?
Yes.
Swear me? Yeah, I raised your right hand. You swear a firm testimony you're about to give before the board's true self, you God?
Yes.
You're the owner of the subject property, 5 McClintock. You're sworn. You may have a seat. Announcement's all yours.
Grab the mic, please.
Yeah.
Let me just sit down. Good evening. My name is Bob Long. I'm representing my son Kevin in this application. I'll just have him testify as to what he wants to do. So I put an application in to move my steps from the east part of my house to the north part of my house. In doing so, the, I approached on North Place, which is a walking path, but technically on paper it's a road, so I have a setback for 40 feet. I only need 36 of it. So I was looking to get my steps moved from the east side of my, my step to the north side. I'm also looking to cover some of my back driveway, where when the town redid the road in, in Mount Tabor, they had a drop curve in the back. When I bought the house, there was a driving, parking space in the back of my house. So parking Mount Tabor's premium, so I'm just trying to capitalize on the parking spaces that is there, and make sure I have, have enough parking space. And then at the end of my driveway, I'd like to put a shed that would then be able to be used for storage, for all the miscellaneous stuff you collect and you can say no to.
Do you park at that driveway now?
Uh, occasionally, yes. Primarily, we park in the front, but I do park in the back when I have visitors, or I have family that come up that are from out of town, or they'll park back there.
The front is a little gravel drive, but that's a walkway there, right?
Uh, the front, the, is a driveway. It's a two-car driveway that was, when they redid the road, that we were able to put, put the parking space in. The parking space was there. They just paved it when, when they came through the, through the roads.
McClintock is not a street.
McClintock is a street.
Is a street.
That, that's my front street.
Okay.
Uh, driveway would be on Porter, which is in the back of my house, which is a dead-end road, but technically it connects to North Place, which is a path.
You can get to it. I see it is asphalted.
Yeah. So Porter's, Porter's paved as a road with curving. McClintock's paved as a road, which is my front port, my front road. North Place is paved as a pathway.
So you're gonna put the driveway on Porter?
Yeah. Correct.
And it'll walk to the house, and that's why you need the steps?
Well, the steps, we want to just move for better accessibility. And until we built the deck, I didn't realize it, but where my back door is to the house, and where it meets the deck, I'd have to walk across the deck to get to the steps. I want to move them to the north side of my house, so when you walk out the door, the steps are to the right, so it doesn't achieve the penalty area.
Is the gravel drive gonna remain on McClintock?
Correct. I want that parked in the front and in the back. That's not a gravel drive. That's a catwalk.
Hey, when was that paved?
Uh, last summer.
Who paved? The township did that?
The town, it had a large road project in Mount Tabor, and as part of that project, the contractors would come around and pave certain areas, yes.
I don't know if we need any kind of agreement... I don't know if we need any kind of, um, agreement. It seems like it's in place, but there, there are technically gonna be parking on the right of way, so may have to be some agreement with the township attorney to continue that. In other words, the, the driveway is that big enough for a vehicle off, off the right of way, and half of the paved driveway is on the right of way?
But we're, we're not here tonight for that, that issue, we're here for the driveway that's on Porter.
I just, um-
But we can't just overlook that.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not asking you to overlook it, but you have to understand, the town did a major project in Mount Tabor, I don't know if you're familiar with it, but they spent, they paid, put in all the drainage, put in tape, all the roads, put cobblestone on McLintock, on Porter, on North Place, on, I live on North Place, and my portion of North Place. And the town engineer was up and managed the whole project, and this was part of that project.
I, I believe what the engineer is saying is it's still a right of way for the town, uh, and as you know, there, he has, he has no, um, interest in, in that property because it's the town's property, but he's using it. So you, we may have to notify the town, and maybe they already know about this, and they won't have a problem with it, but we're just-
We're okay with you notifying the town, we're just, we're not-
And this would be all subject to the town, because we have no control over the town, but, so, so we can't grant you things over the town's property, i.e. any type of use of that paved, um-
But we're, we're not asking for that.
I understand that, I understand that.
No, it's just that we recognize it, we just have to deal with something that's, uh, obviously on the plan, so it's nothing more than that.
We, we have no objection to you notifying the town engineer, but we're, we're not here about that tonight.
So that can't hold us up.
Okay.
Good question.
Correct, is it paperwork?
Like, if that's the issue, you'll have a lot more mind-
No, it's just a matter of putting it on, it's just a matter of putting it on record, that's all.
Nope.
Can I, can I ask you what, the driveway off of Porter, how did you arrive at that size?
Uh, we figured two car, two car lengths, two car flights wide.
So four cars?
Mm-hmm. Planned for the future, I never know, you never know how, how big it-
No, you have to stand, then you have to also consider the imperious coverage and how that
Hmm?
alters the ratio on this lot.
The little inconsistency, you say you occasionally use it, and it just seems like a lot of blacktop on relatively small lot. Which all the what?
Yeah.
For Mount Tabor, this is a relatively large lot.
Yeah.
For the record.
And the house is actually on the lot.
But the, uh, there's no imperious coverage, uh-
No.
Nothing triggered, so.
No.
Who just wondered why is that?
It's not even a dress.
Where's your flagpole?
It's gotta be in the front yard, right now, it, cause of how my front roof goes, I guess they took it off, but, uh, how, how my front roof is, and, uh, when that comes across, I rack a flag every two weeks, and I just can't have a padded flag out on my house.
So-
So I'm just putting a flagboard, just to-
The things for us to approve are proposing two-foot approvals on the side yard, and your neighbors are not objecting to your proposal, they're talking about it?
I thought, yeah, I have one back neighbor that I talked to about it when, when he was, when I went and delivered the letter to him.
Yeah.
The, uh, where we're positioning it, it's kind of at the corner of his lot, and at there, there's, you have bushes and some trees that, that kind of were three-quarters of the year, probably, I think it's gonna block the shed. I've never viewed it from, from his side, but just from my side, looking there, by three-quarters of the year, I think it'll, it'll, it won't be, it'll be a-
He has no problem, he didn't say-
No, and, and the way his house is situated, it's on the far side of the, of the lot, so the-
The neighbor's?
The neighbor's house, yes. It's kind of like this property here, where the house is situated in the road right of way.
And the neighbor, um, communicated that they have no problem in looking, I, I would assume the shed is taller than the fence?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, so that neighbor didn't, um, vocalize any type of concern about what they're gonna be looking as they relax in the backyard?
Not, not to me.
There's considerable amount of shrubbery there also.
Uh, yeah, so that's where I was actually going with that, right, so just in case the neighbor at some point in time says, you know, can you put shrubbery, if, if there is already shrubbery, great?
There is, and you actually probably, you would have trouble noticing the fence, so just a board and being kind of, very slight type fence, and a significant amount of shrubbery.
Right, so should shrubbery not be adequate enough to block that, the visual of that, uh, excuse me, shed? You wouldn't mind planting something to help the neighbor out?
Nope. No, I, I, I like planting stuff, I, as soon as we get done building everything in the house, we plant stuff.
Right. I'm just saying, you know, again, you know, we don't know how it looks until it's all built, and maybe the neighbor will have second thoughts at that point, and so if there's any mitigation plans, you know, should that happen, that'll be great.
Yeah, I, we have no issues planting anything, uh, the friendly neighbors are good neighbors.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions, any members of the public have questions for this application?
No, one more thing, I'm sorry, I do have another question. Yeah, I, I, what, what are you putting in the shed, please?
Uh, lawn, lawn tools, uh, anything that we have outside for plants, and all the knickbacks that I can't throw out yet, and I don't wanna store in the house.
Got it, thank you.
All right, there were no, uh, members of the public with- No members of the public with, uh, questions? Anyone from the public wish to speak for this application or against this application? Anyone's come forward. Uh, would someone on the board like to, uh, make a recommendation?
Again, the minimis in nature, neighbors are not minding, he will plant more shrubage, if that's a word, uh, if needed, so I will be, uh, voting for it. You like that one, eh, Dave?
I mean, I was gonna ask you to spell the minimis, but-
That's right up there with super de minimis.
Oh, right. Someone, uh, frame a resolution, please?
Sure, I will. Uh, in application twenty-two forty-one, Kevin Long, five McLintock Place, block seventy-six, lot one, R three, zone that we grant a C variance to construct a shed, relocate a deck landing and stairs, uh, install a new driveway contrary to sections four thirty dash thirty-five, uh, columns four, and then section four thirty dash ten, C, section four thirty, uh, dash two seventy-five, X.
Second, Jaskiewicz.
You know, provided that, um, should there be any mitigation efforts needed, um, at the request of the neighbor, that they be cooperative.
Still, still. It's been, it's been seconded twice by the same person. Uh, Nora, call the roll, please.
Jaskiewicz, Captain?
Yes.
Musarella?
Yes.
Farick?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Willen?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Passes, and like, resolution will be in, but two meetings.
You sure?
Two meetings.
Have a good night.
All right, that brings us to case number twenty-twenty, Jihad Zaidan, two fifty Park Road. Jihad. Good evening, welcome back.
Is this your attorney?
He's ready to go. We last saw you May fourth, I believe?
Actually, May fourth, Mr. Chairman, I think it was adjourned, ended up being adjourned tonight. Maybe you've had COVID.
Ah, okay.
You want me to swear your climbing?
Uh, sure.
So raise your right hand, you swear a firm testimony about to give before the board, through self to God? You're the owner of the subject property, uh, Jihad Zaidan. All right, thank you, you can have a seat.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, my name is David Brady, from Brady and Corial, appearing on behalf of Mr. Zaidan tonight. Uh, if the board will indulge me, I'll run quickly through what the application is about. Property is two fifty Park Road, block ninety-eight, lot fifty-one oh three, it's in the R one zone. The property is located between Park Road and the Route eighty sound wall. It's a very unusual shape, very long and narrow. I've got the snooping arc of Park Road along the front of it, which is a single family house on the property where Mr. Zaidan and his family lives, and the house is not in the middle of the property because of the wide and narrow, shallow, depth lot. It's over on the right-hand side, and it's not even, uh, in the normal configuration, I would say. It's facing the road directly, it's kind of canted. Um, the reason for the application is that Mr. Zaidan has a hobby. He has a sports car that he races on the weekends, he keeps it in the garage, but he trailers it to the races that he goes to, and so he has an open, uh, trailer, framed trailer, metal trailer, that he, uh, trailers to the, to these races, and he stores that on the property. He put down gravel on the, if you're facing the property, on the very far left-hand side of the property, and he puts the trailer there. When the trailer's there, it doesn't have the car on it, it's just simply the trailer. Uh, he was cited by the zoning officer, he didn't realize that he needed a zoning committee to put down some gravel and put the trailer there, uh, and so now we're here to ask for relief and approval. Um, the most significant variance is a D one variance that Mr. Chadwick pointed out that we need, which is that we have the storage of a trailer in the front yard, which is not permitted under section four thirty dash twenty-five, subpart B, uh, C of the zoning code. Um, we also originally needed an imperious coverage variance, however, the latest design reduces the amount of coverage on the property by reducing the gravel that's there, uh, so we do not need that anymore. There's what I'll call, uh, I guess we'll call it bulk variance, it's kind of pursued in that, in that use variance, in that the part of the parking area is within the fifty-foot front yard setback. So, in the definition of yard, because it's in front of the house, in between the house, in front of the house, and the road, the storage is currently in the front yard, technically it's also occurring within that setback. Uh, lastly, I think, and I could not find it, I don't know why, when I was looking through my documents, there was a note by someone that it's not designed exactly to driveway specs, and we're asking for a waiver of whatever those specs may be. I have three witnesses today, I have Mr. Zaidan to talk a little bit about, uh, the situation of the property and what he does, Mr. Ferante, who is the engineer on the property, and Mr. Pasalano, who is our planner. Uh, we've provided notice to the neighbors, it originally was provided by Mr. Callie and myself, uh, early on, but then in May, when we ended up with an adjournment, the board asked if we renoticed, we've done that, I've delivered proof of notice and publication, I believe it's all in order.
Just one question for me. Uh, I like racing, I like to let things go. The point being, you want us to approve a parking vehicle on the street, or front lawn, basically, on any residential area. Is there no other place you could park that trailer? If all you use it for is when you go on the weekends to race, why can't it be someplace else?
That's exactly what I go through, yes. The shape of this property, and where the house is, and where the driveway is, there's a small patio and a kind of extensive swing set. This, we believe, is the place where it fits best on the lot, it impacts least the house and the use of this lot, and it also is a good spot in terms of the distance from neighborhood.
Here's what I, maybe he's asking this, this is my question. If I own an RV, and I can't park it in my house, I'm renting, why can't we do that with this trailer?
Well, of course, that could always be done, okay, but we believe that the trailer is innocuous enough in terms of its size, in terms of its, I'm calling bulk, it's an open trailer, it's not like an RV where you have a slab on the side, it's open frame, and we'll go through that, and we'll show you a picture that Mr. Pasalano-
Yeah, with a hitch.
Yes.
With a hitch.
Yes.
Well, I mean, he's, okay.
Why can't you back the trailer into the garage?
Excuse me?
Why can't you back the trailer into the garage?
Being the garage's fault.
Well, it's also, it's also an eighteen-foot trailer, and the garage is not deep enough.
I'm sorry?
It's an eighteen-foot trailer, and the garage is not deep enough.
The garage doesn't have an eighteen-foot depth?
No.
Unusual garage.
It's underneath the house, I mean, it's in the house. Even if it's eighteen feet, I, I think that the trailer rating-
See, the garage is twenty-two feet deep.
Uh, I could be wrong about the depth of my garage, but it just doesn't fit in the garage, because it's eighteen feet depth, but then it's got like, you know, the, the extended, uh, hitch, and it just doesn't fit in the garage, I mean, I, I've never tried to put it in there, but I know it doesn't fit in there.
He is under-
He is, he was sworn in.
You've never tried to put it in the garage?
No.
I think you should try before-
Well, to be honest with you, I mean, it's, it's not necessarily the easiest thing, because, uh, the, the garage's on the side of the house, and to get it, to get, to line it up with the truck, of course, for my house, I have to actually pull it with the truck, um, and back it up with the truck, um, the angle at which the house is, is positioned, and, and where the fence is, it, it almost makes it impossible for me to get a large, you know, vehicle with a hitch on it, just to get in there, and I have a circular driveway, so like, it's very difficult to, to be able to even navigate through the driveway with the trailer, let alone park it in the driveway.
You mentioned that you planned to, or have reconfigured the driveway where the trailer is.
Right.
A bunch of pictures accompanying this application originally. One of them shows the driveway and the trailer. Is that driveway different now?
Driveway, I don't know if we've made the changes yet.
No, the changes haven't been made yet.
Changes have been made yet, the change-
The gravel will be reduced, the gravel-
Gravel will be reduced. Uh, the latest plan that Mr. Ferante can testify is to that.
It'll show that?
Yes.
Have, have we submitted that to the board?
Yeah.
Within ten, ten days prior?
I think it was submitted quite a while ago.
Months ago, yeah. Yeah, it hasn't changed.
So the, the, the garage is on the, if you were looking at your house, you got the circular driveway, right in the front, on the left side, right, and that's towards the, the sound wall?
Yes, it's like on an angle.
Can't, can't that hitch go in the back angle of that property?
I'm sorry, one more time, I didn't hear you?
That, can't the hitch go to the far back left of, like, where your driveway extends into the garage area? Is there any more asphalt landing, um, beyond that?
Behind it? No, uh, there's grass back there. Um, and do you have pictures, or can you see the property, um,
Well, I-
Layout?
I go see property.
I could show you how, uh, are, are you specifically speaking about an area of my property, or?
I'm speaking about your property.
Okay, so what, what part are you talking about, and what, what do you mean by the hitch?
Okay, okay, you know what, we'll hold that for the engineer.
And I just wanna mention that I have not received revised plans.
Uh, we don't have any pictures of the revised plan.
What date is the plan date?
It was originally submitted in two thousand twenty February. Provision A. Exact date? The twelfth of February.
Of what year? Well, that was the year of the original application.
It's been carried?
Right, but he's saying that these guys' plans have, I haven't received anything, what, what he's got here.
They haven't changed.
So that is not revised?
Why don't we get up and get, get, confusion's gonna go through here. Snowballing there.
We can't just say we've put Mr. Zaidan's road in, he's still in the road, okay?
We, I put him-
Under oath for the whole application?
Yeah, we did.
If we go through his testimony, they'll bring up the engineer, he'll show, lay out the plan, and he can explain it to you. Um, Mr. Zaidan, for the record, uh, you reside at two fifty Park Ave?
Yes.
And how long have you lived there?
Since two thousand sixteen.
And who do you live there with?
I reside there with my wife and two kids.
Real, real briefly, would you describe the property and where the house is located, and Mr. Ferante will go into detail and show it on a map, but just briefly, for the record and the board?
Sure, uh, you described it pretty accurately when you spoke. Uh, it's, uh, narrow, long, it's, uh, L-shaped, it's, uh, follows the curve of, uh, Park Road, and in fact, it's on Park Road in a section where it's the closest that it, that Park Road gets to Route eighty. So it's been, it's, it, I'm, I'm basically squeezed between the narrowest section of pro, of land, um, uh, that, that runs along Park Road. Um, also, uh, of course, uh, the sound barrier behind me, um, the property is also, uh, sloped off, uh, sloped down off of Park Road in almost every section, and it's also very uneven in most areas, except for the one area that's in question, that is the reason why we're here today, it's actually level with Park Road, and, um, there's no, it's not heavily wooded, so it's ideal for a place to, um, uh, park a, a vehicle.
And where's the house located on the-
So the house is actually in the back right corner, I have a very small backyard, it's, it's a small triangular section, which basically is bordered by my neighbor's, uh, fence and, uh, the Route eighty, uh, barrier, a, a fence first, and then there's like an easement back there, and then the barrier.
Do you have a patio or a deck or anything?
I have a, I have a wooden deck back there, um, and a, uh, paper patio as well, behind the house.
So, well, let's talk, we're talking about the trailer and your race car, explain to the board a little bit on the record, because I'm not testifying, you are.
Okay.
What the situation is with the trailer.
So, yes, uh, the other, yeah, so the one reason why, why we are here is because I have a hobby, and it is, um, a hobby that involves a, a, a sports car that I, um, that I put on a trailer, and I, uh, use the trailer to take the car to events. And, um, the car is stored in the garage, um, the trailer, as we mentioned, is where I, I park it, where, on the, on the gravel pad. Um, so, you know, the, the trailer, as, as he mentioned, Um, so, you know, the, the trailer, as, as he mentioned, it's, is very, uh, it's very discreet, uh, it's gray, it's, uh, flat deck, it's about two feet off the ground, um, it's aluminum, um, you know, and when it's parked there, you can really, you can barely see it until you're right by it, because I have a lot of trees and, um, you know, it's heavily wooded from one direction, and I have some landscaping done on, on, from the other direction. We plan on, um, reducing the gravel pad, as he mentioned, and as well as, um, putting some more vegetation and, and, and trees and stuff to cover it up as a buffer to make it work.
You said the gravel is, uh, or, excuse me, the, the frame is gray, I had a colloquy with the chairman a little bit about an RV and the difference between RVs.
Yeah, so-
When you say the frame, what do you mean?
So, uh, this is a trailer that basically is just a deck, it's a deck that a car drives up on, it's not covered, it, there's no, um, structures, it's not a storage, uh, enclosure or anything like that, um, when you, you know, uh, it, it's, it's, it's very, um, it's, 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 it's very discreet, actually, that's really all I can say about it.
Is there any part other than the deck, is there any part that comes up in each?
It has a, uh, it has a, uh, a wheel rack, which is, uh, just aluminum, uh, frame, uh, that extends a few feet above the deck that allows me to put wheels on there whenever I, uh, transport a car.
Do you leave the wheels on the, the trailer when it's parked?
No, no, I leave nothing on there, actually, it's empty whenever it's stored, I only use it, I only put stuff on it when I use it for the trips that I take.
Um, I, I've, uh, have indicated Mr. Pasalano, our engineer, or, excuse me, our planner is going to testify, and he's going to introduce some documents to the board, uh, in terms of photos, have you seen those photos?
I have.
Are they accurate in terms of what the trailer looks like and what the property looks like?
Yes, they are.
Um, talk a little bit about the driveway and how that works, and whether or not it can be expanded, or whether you can maneuver the trailer and, and what if you tow the trailer with, around the garage?
Sure, uh, as I mentioned earlier, I have a circular driveway and, um, there's a large, a slightly larger section of asphalt that, um, extends, uh, past the circle, um, next to my house to the left in front of my garages. Uh, the, uh, the circle is not too wide, it's just barely wide enough for me to sneak through with the trailer connected, uh, when I load my car up, because I load it up in my driveway, um, but, uh, just next to that is a swing set, uh, I can't put anything there, of course, and then just next to that is the flat section that I was mentioning, uh, that, that we're talking about tonight. Um, it doesn't seem like, I mean, if I ever parked the, 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 the trailer in the, in the driveway anywhere, it would do one of many things, or many of, of, of a few things that, uh, it will, it will, uh, cause. One will be, it'll either block the roundabout, uh, another, it would either block access to go in and out of my garage, and then the other, of course, is just be a huge obstruction for, uh, my kids, uh, when they ride their bikes and, and their scooters in, in, in the driveway, uh, it's like the only place that they could, because there's no sidewalks or anything in our area.
There's some questions about parking the trailer in the garage and-
Yeah, I, I honestly don't think that it will fit, um, in the garage, I can take measurements and show you guys after I go home tonight, because you got me questioning whether it does, but the garage is not as deep as, uh, as you might think, and it's also, the trailer is a lot bigger than you might think, uh, in terms of length, uh, from end to end, and it wouldn't allow the garage to close, I think.
You know, I, I'm sorry.
I don't have any further questions?
Sure.
We've got probably several.
Yeah.
Yeah, please.
With a couple of things.
Sure.
You testified, your words, you can barely see it.
The trailer?
Looking at the photo, correct. There's no barely about that, that's, there's nothing obscure yet.
I am-
You talked about that wheel rack, you said the, the trailer itself is about two feet off the ground, that's probably right?
Yeah, the wheel rack is another few feet, uh, tall.
Define few.
Uh, three.
If I'm standing next to that?
It's three, it's three feet off of, well, it's three feet of, uh, uh, off the deck itself, so it's technically two feet, and then it's five feet, so it's like, at the height of it, it's probably about five, five and a half feet.
Tell me how that's barely visible in your words.
Uh, it's silver, and it's just tubes, it doesn't have any, any, uh, loud colors, it, it blends in with the background of the barrier behind it and the trees.
Hold up this photo.
It's, it's camouflaged.
The audience behind you would be able to see it.
I never said it was invisible.
You said barely see it.
Barely notice.
I just, I'm, I'm not sure I-
Sure, I understand, I understand, I understand.
Yeah, I, I'd like to go. So, I, you know, with all due respect, um, if I have a hobby that requires additional vehicles, all right, you're just gonna have to live with it, this is not a hardship. I don't even think I need to hear from any of the experts, this is not a hardship, frankly, in my opinion, that is an eyesore, it is against our ordinance, and, um, you know, it, you know, I have a lot of cars in my parking lot, I got growing kids, I got growing this, I got, I'm not gonna be coming to the board, asking more, for more impervious coverage to accommodate, you know, my situation, it's a circumstance that, um, I caused myself, and it's not a hardship, so I, I'm really having a hard time with this, and it, it's an eyesore to put something like this in the front yard.
Not only that, I guess my question would also be, if we were to approve it, what does the approval say? Who's to say that the next person doesn't put a, a boat or something else on, in the front?
And additionally, I mean, I have yet to see the additional photos from the next expert, but I went to the property, there is, again, when I have stuff delivered, that's not conducive to, you know, whatever, I, I put it in an area, and it's not on my front lawn, it's an obscure area where I can, like, handle it, clean it up, you know, and then just move on. You're asking us to just bend our ordinance like a rubber band to suit a hobby?
So, the reason why I consider it a hardship is because-
I have problems with it.
Because the majority of my property is unusable for anything because of the, because of the shape of it.
A, you bought it, B, there, there are areas, and then, you know, I guess we can hear from the expert, but I, again, there's no hardship, so I, we're gonna hear it.
We'll have to go through that, Mr.-
Well, that's fine, that's fine, but the property has spacer, okay, whereby he can park in, yes, it may, it may block something, well, it, you know, that's the consequences of having, uh, big equipment hobbies.
You'll, you'll hear from the expert, but the fact is, there's really no spot that you would not require a front yard variance, because the front yard is everything between the front wall of the house and the road.
There is a section of the property in the back that I was alluding to, but I, I'm really curious about these updated photos that have yet to be seen.
I'm curious to know what the back you're talking about, because I-
I think right out, right outside, front of the garage.
Side, as you go to the garage, you were actually, uh, indirectly addressing it when you said, "We can't put it here because, uh, it would block a bay of your garage," that's what I'm assuming.
Yeah.
Um, and then, of course, you know, and then the bicycles of, of your kids would be impeding, the bicycle.
Well, they would, they'd ride on the, on the-
But, I mean, you know.
If it blocked, if it blocked the bay.
It's still not a hardship, as, as you presented it now, no, I'm sorry, go ahead.
If it blocked the bay where your car sits, that'd be perfect area for it, because then you just drive the car right up it, right from the garage.
The car is street legal, and I do drive it when I'm, you know, as I'm, some, in the weekends, whenever, you know, even though I'm not taking the trailer.
But you're just gonna have to move cars around, that's, you know, that's what every homeowner does when they have cars.
Trailers don't just move around, you have to hook up to it.
Could, could I interrupt?
Either way.
You're not gonna abandon your hobby. You're hearing a lot of comments, I think you need to go back and reassess your alternatives in terms of this location.
Mr. Chadwick, what I'd like to do is run through at least Mr. Ferante, so he can have in front of us the layout of the property, so that if the board members continue to ask questions, we can potentially market on the, the exhibit or do something, so we know exactly what you're talking about.
My suggestion is that you go back and look at your alternatives, and then do it. I think right now we'd be going through a plan for road, basically, just, okay, here's the map, you know, I think you'd be much better off coming back, and I don't-
Then we'll have a map in front of us, so when Ms. Snyder or someone else says, "Well, couldn't you put it here?", we can all understand where you're talking.
We have a map, we have the survey.
I have the map and I have the survey, but we, we've not spoken about it on the record, and talking about it now-
I, I gave you a suggestion, I thought you might want to say, you know what, let's-
And we might, and we might, but I'd like to get Mr. Ferante on, so I have a little better understanding.
...before coming up here and presenting something.
Yeah, we're not gonna, we can't take a straw poll, so you're-
I'm not gonna ask for a straw.
But, no, but before we go any further, I, I'd like to make sure, I, I looked at the plan, and I don't completely understand the easement area, the, it says width of gravel drive, is that part, part, expanded, or, I, I'm confused by-
That's why I think, let Mr. Ferante testify, he can go through, explain where everything is.
It also shows a municipal water main, right underneath that.
We're trying to move away from that, that's part of the-
There's a fire hydrant.
Fire hydrant, right? And we have a le, we have a letter from the municipal water people indicating they have no problem with the plan in the front.
Okay, that, we have an email, I said, what, we have an email. All right, I need something to write in, I don't have any.
Did it tell you to put some bulbs around that fire hydrant?
They did not.
Well, you go to-
Yeah, I mean, if the board requires them.
Yeah, we, we're willing to take any measures that we need to, just, you know.
And, and I, I think the other point needs to be made, just because you buy a house and you have a hobby, that doesn't mean that, no one's telling you not to do your hobby, this is maybe an inconvenience to you to have to put your trailer somewhere else, get it in here, and take it out when you need it, but just because you have a piece of property and a hobby doesn't mean we have to say you fit it in somewhere.
No, no one has to do anything, I'm asking.
Well, what's, what's clear is, you wanna continue?
I'd like to continue to have Mr. Ferante walk through the map-
It's your application.
And then hear, in person with the board, with the map in front of us, that we may very well go back before we continue, but right now, frankly, I don't quite see where we would put this, because to go to, uh, Ms. Snyder's point of view, or maybe it was Mr. Mizarelli, about, well, you're parking the driveway, we can't park it in the driveway, it's in the front yard.
You could, you could rent in your garage.
Well, that's true, but you know what? If we had a more regularly shaped lot, we would have a backyard perhaps, or a sideyard that it could fit in, not require a variance and be here, that's the hardship, we have a very odd shaped lot that the average person doesn't have, we could park it, parking trailers is permitted in the zone, not in the front yard, and we have a, and we have a-
Except for a reason, for good reason.
We have a piece of property that is very unusual, and the MLU recognizes that as a reason to grant a variance.
It's not commercial, you see there, it's not commercial, it's just private, it's, I'm not, I'm not parking.
It's not a hardship, Mr. Chadwick, are we gonna spin our wheels, listen, and then they're gonna go back and then we're-
I don't know what they're gonna do.
It doesn't make sense to do it that way, this is the car before the horse.
To reassess, and they don't want to.
So, it's their, it's his application, he has to do what he wants to do.
Not indicating they don't want to reassess, I wanna ha, I would like to have, because frankly, I'm not sure where some of the board members are suggesting it might go, let's put aside for the moment, take it over to public storage or somewhere like that, but on this lot, where the board might think it might fit, and if we understand where you think it might fit, I'm happy to go back.
It's not our, it's not our decision.
But, all, all of our back and forths right now are just taking up time, why don't we just let him go and do his thing?
If I could call Mr. Ferante.
Sir, could you raise your right hand? You swear a firm testimony you got to give before the board's troops help you got? And for, for the record, can you state and spell your name? Yes, John C. Ferante F.E.R.R.A.N.T.E. And you're an engineer? Yes. And your licenses are in full force in effect, you've been qualified either before this board or other boards in the city of Jersey, and he's qualified, his next one. Thank you.
So, Mr. Ferante, you prepared the plan in this instance?
Yes, uh, again, the, the plans were prepared back in 2020, at the beginning, at the beginning of the, the COVID pandemic, I was here to have the first night that we were going to present, uh, again, for the record, the, the drawings were, it's originally dated February 17, 2020, and I had signed them in on March 5th, 2020, prior to the, uh, being here for you, for that original application.
And, and those revisions include that revision or reduction in the size of the gravel area?
Correct.
So if you would-
Let's just clear this up, you have not filed that map yet, though.
It was filed back in, uh, originally. Yeah, we were here, uh, in Mar, I think in March of 2020, when Mr. Callie was the original attorney.
I know who the first attorney was.
And that evening is when we found out that we, we were, D1 variance and the rest, and we could come back and, and so postponing-
But prior to that date, you had submitted these plans with that revision.
Correct.
And the date on that map is?
The, the revision date is February 12, 17, 2020, I signed it on March 5th, 2020, I, I don't recall the exact date of the hearing that night.
I just wanted to see the, see the plan.
What do you have, Katie?
Yeah, I, I have the plan.
Yeah, they, the only map that I, or the only plan I got, uh, I have a date stamped, May 22nd, 2020, and that would have been passed out, this application's been bouncing around for a long time, so, and I don't, what, I don't know what date you just said your revised was.
Right, so, again, that's the date of the, of the drawings, they're not revised, in fact, they've been, they're really been mounted since then, that night, we haven't, uh, taken it off the board. Uh, do you have the survey or my, or the actual drawings from each of them?
A, a, a survey and the original plans that were submitted.
Mark of vision as a testimony, that's been changed, but we haven't seen that.
Yeah, new pictures.
I didn't, uh, we didn't change it.
Jeff, there was other new pictures.
I think the change is probably to discuss the change you, which we have proposed for the driveway.
That's the revision.
Yeah.
It's not the revision of the plans, the revision is of the, of the driveway.
Correct. To reduce, to reduce the, the gravel area that was originally constructed, we are, our drawings indicate that we are reducing the, the rough, currently, there's 15, 100, 1,526 square feet of gravel, which we're proposing to reduce down to 686, a decrease of 840, which increases on different blocks, that's really the, the only change.
Plans of what?
Impervious.
Impervious.
It's gravel.
Gravel.
It's gravel.
It's not even on here as, as an issue.
And the plan you have mounted shows the reduced driveway size.
Now, I could take the, the board through that, if you like, so that, uh, can everybody see this, or should I move it back?
Not very well.
A little hard.
That's probably not gonna help.
Oh, that's, yeah, yeah, it's, uh-
It's too small. Can I have a, a quick question for you? You said the water department gave you the okay? We have a letter from Danielle. We don't have a letter, because, or I don't have a copy of that letter.
We have an email, we can submit.
You see it, Nancy?
No, I did not.
Oh.
I never received it, so.
So, uh, so what I did, obviously, uh, what you see is, is an area review of, of the property and the, the existing, uh, lot is shown in blue, uh, to help the board visualize, I prepared an exhibit, and we can market it A2, A1, and basically, the exhibit is, is the site condition that we provided, but I, uh-
But that is, so for the record, it just indicated the exhibit one. One, okay, and what is it?
It's, it's a drawing of the site, showing all the existing conditions, but most important, we colorized the front yard so that the board, you see where the hardship is on this property. Approximately 60% of the property, it's a 40,000 square foot piece of property, and about 28,000 of that is front yard, so six, about 60%. The only, subtracting all the setbacks, the rear yard and side yard setback, you only have this triangle that is considered a built-in lot. In fact, that's the, the house is shown here, the driveway, the circle driveway that was testified, and then obviously, the sound wall in the back. So there is a small area, a triangle in the back there, but that's not large enough to be able to, it's too small for the trailer size. So originally, if I may just point to the gravel driveway that was, that was, it's basically gravel. No earthwork was done, gravel placed, and then the trailer was parked in the back. So in this section, the entire area of the proposed gravel driveway is entirely in the front yard. But what we are proposing is to change, to reduce the size of the driveway, so we reduce the size of the gravel that was constructed, to create a small 15-foot wide gravel driveway to the back. I want to point out that if there's an existing fire hydrant, the water line that was discussed traverses the gravel driveway and just slightly under the proposed driveway. So the, I think some of the commentary that we heard from the, from the board, well, where else can you put this trailer without being in the front yard? Trust me, we looked at that because we didn't want to create that hardship, I don't want to use the word hardship, but that front yard issue. And really, just to orient the board, there's, the playground is also in the front yard, so, and the driveway is here, the garage, the travel smoothies, in that side of the house, there's the patio, there's a deck. So really, just to anticipate a question, in this area, there's a shed, so we couldn't use, so the only really place, if, so if you ask me as a professional, where I could put this trailer that's not in the front yard, I have to, I have to tell the board. The only really place is on the side with the sound wall, but, and one of the main reasons that that was discounted, is you see, there's a very small rear yard, so to put a trailer there, the entire rear yard would be disrupted because the trailer would literally just be able to fit between the pavement and to the back. So, so we took note of the issue of the amount of gravel that was put down, we're proposing to reduce it, and again, the question, I think, that I heard is, where else can we put the driveway without causing this issue? And as Mr. Zedon indicated, that the park road slopes on both sides, so locating the driveway here at, almost at the center line of the arc that's created by the lot, makes the side triangle issue much better as opposed to trying to place it at the end of this, to our neighbors to the west. Then a drive, also, the driveway would be needed to get to access the back. Here, again, it's difficult because of the, of the front, the entire property from the yard. So literally, as an engineer, if we asked me, put the trailers with it so that it fits the property without being in the front yard, and ideal, and the only place is to be able to access up the asphalt and really impact on the rear yard, and a very, a really small rear yard.
I gotta ask just some clarification.
This is Exhibit A1.
Thank you.
Oh, I have copies.
I grabbed them.
Thank you.
Just another question, what's the footage there on the back part along the wall?
Can I just clarify that this is actually, hey, you mentioned the ditch to...
Or something about that one?
I'm just talking about the paved area outside the garage. I can't see your head's in the way there. Just, here, let me see this one first.
Yeah, the driveway is basically, it's a regular...
So this one right here, this space right here is paved, from what I'm assuming, all this is paved?
No, it's paved up to here.
Okay, so this is paved. What's the footage there?
There is, I think it's 25, 26 feet, if I can just scale it.
And how long is the trailer?
The trailer...
Have you, I have a question, have you ever parked the trailer?
Yes, I've owned an enclosed trailer, yes.
You know, like, in that area, because it's...
Use the microphone.
Sorry.
There's also a wheel you could put under the front.
Yeah, to roll it around. I know, so I am. Are you talking about this section right here?
Yeah, the back part, along the wall, there's a straight part.
And you're asking how long this is? I don't know how big, how big that is.
He just said it's about 24 foot, 25 maybe.
Okay, even, even to the left of that, if I'm looking, and I'm not sure you're Peach, trying to find it in the Peach section there, there is a 20, the rear yard setback is outlined, and it's paved. There's a part where it can go.
Right, this section right here?
It's a paved section.
It's very hard to get in and out of the garage.
We're not even asking you to put it in the garage at that point. It can, if I'm not mistaken, it can be outside because that's the rear yard.
Yeah.
So why not just leave it in the paved section of the driveway that currently exists that's behind the setback, and we're done?
It would make the use of the garage difficult because every time somebody wants to access the garage, the trailer that...
Not if it's put up against the fence.
This is a consequence, this is a consequence of a situation that the applicant created themselves. Again, I...
The applicant didn't create them.
Well, in pursuing the hobby, in pursuing the hobby and the needed extra equipment.
And every lot is not going to accommodate every desire.
Yeah. Or every aspect of the applicant's lifestyle.
If you're testifying that there's nowhere else that the trailer could go, you might be just agreeing with us. That if we don't want it in the front, and there's nowhere else for it to go, it has to go somewhere else.
No, I, to clarify that, what I did say, that if, just as an engineer, if the task was to fit the trailer, which is about eight foot wide, like 25, and fit it, I could, I could maybe fit here, barely, but the hardship that we would be causing, that boards, as a lot of testimony, they recognize that they're creating a hardship on the top of a lot that substandard that could, literally, the rear yard would be much more impacted and totally destroying the rear yard, as opposed to allowing a small driveway to be created, and recognizing, as was testified, there are, it's a heavily wooded section to the neighbors, so the neighbors, literally, I drove this, and you really get to see the trailer when you're literally right on top of it.
So we might be making the judgment that we don't approve of the trailer being visible to people driving by on the road every day? That's our judgment.
And we would try to mitigate that through landscaping or whatever.
Yeah, all right, so can we?
Just for the record, you can put the trailer in the backyard where the paving is, yes or no?
Okay, thank you.
Now I'm understanding where the board is thinking, so as I said, my inclination is, I'll talk to my client, it's not to finish tonight, we have some ideas about the board's concerns, we'll look closely at those and see if the geometry does work, see what happens if we...
We gotta carry this thing?
Yeah, I guess so.
Measure the garage.
I think that was Mr. Chadwick's talking about.
Yeah, but just also, I'm sorry, David.
Where it stands right now, so we gotta come back.
I understand.
And we're also not going to approve with the reasoning, I can't get into my garage bay because this is parked. I mean, again, that, you know, not being able to put something on a front lawn in violation of our, of our ordinance is not a civil right because he can't make it happen. He's gonna have to make it happen. He's gonna have to look at all the alternatives.
Chairman, you're agreeing to come back? You're agreeing to come back?
If the board has any more concerns, suggestions?
You don't want us to vote on this tonight, do you?
I'm gonna look very detailed, we're gonna look very detailed at what the board is suggesting, and can we do it and what we can do.
So you're requesting that we carry this?
We need to get some specifics, the width of the trailer, the length, whether, let me finish.
Okay, that's all right.
Jesus, sorry. I'm not gonna go any further.
And the letter from the board?
You interrupted, I'm gonna finish.
Mr. Chadwick.
The letter from the board?
At one point in time, if he can't make it fit, it goes to a storage facility.
Correct.
Okay, but he thinks that, I don't want everybody to be under the misrepresentation, at least from where I stand and my vote, in my position, that if you turn around and conclude that there's nowhere in that property that will work, and you say, we can't make it work, therefore, it needs to be in the front yard?
What if his alternative?
It needs to be in a storage facility.
What if his alternative is variance for him? He's explained it, and he has to take that driveway off the park road, suppose that.
We need to go through it, and Ms. Snyder, if you're ahead of the evidence...
If he comes up, he concludes that the only way I can have this trailer on the property is on that piece of driveway or expand it, then he's gonna withdraw his application, remove the driveway from where it is, and put it over there, and he's done, he's...
Well, that's potentially what we would do. If we turn, if we look into that and say this...
Let's not go with this any further.
Yeah.
I think he's telling you that's what can happen.
June 29th, December 20th, July 28th, May 4th, September 14th, and one more? That's it?
That's fine, that's fine. What date would you like, Mr. Chairman?
And do we need extensions, Nora?
We need an extension, and January 25th.
January is first Friday?
Yeah. One more question before we conclude. How long has the property owner owned this property?
2016, I believe.
Great, thank you, thank you.
All right.
So January 25th, no first notice, and I consent to the extension, but I'll follow it up with an email, so there's something.
Anyone from the public here for this case?
No.
Okay. Here.
Who's it carried to?
25th, June. All right, that brings us to Application 2242, 11 Waterview.
Please be quiet. Please be quiet.
Counsel, you want me to swear your...
Sir, you raise your right hand, you swore firm testimony about to give before the board's true self you got? And for the record?
It's Jamario Bills from GK Ventures.
Okay, and you're just factual about the operation of the building? Do you have another?
Yes, my, my sign contractor.
Okay, sign contractor, raise your right hand, you swore firm testimony about to give before the board's true self you got? For the record, your name?
Michael Mark.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, what's your name?
Michael Mark, American, from Sinomatic of Howard, New Jersey.
And I'm sorry, I missed, was there?
Jamario Bills.
Oh, yeah, spell your name, please.
J. J. E. M. A. R. I. O. B. I. B. B. S.
And you are?
One of three councils for GK Venture Partners.
Yeah, the applicant, oh, the tenant of the applicant, and I apologize. Marco, Marco Light is the sign company, not Sinomatic. Okay, thank you, thank you for hearing us here. Stephen Tombalakian from Wiener Law Group. On behalf of the applicant's owner, which is 11 Waterview Boulevard LLC, which is the classic building right across the street, we're here this evening for two reasons. One is to seek variance approvals to allow tenant identification sites on three facades of this building, but also to introduce one of the, one of Parsippany's newest businesses. GK Ventures has moved into Parsippany within the past two years. At first, it took one floor of the building across the street, now it pretty much has the whole building. So it's a, it's a growing business, and they're, they love their home in Parsippany, and they want to...
What is their business?
I'm gonna let you, Jamario, I don't, I don't understand it. It's private equity, which I don't even know what that means, but, Jamario, why don't you introduce yourself, introduce your company, and explain what it is you do in Parsippany?
Good evening, my name is Jamario Bills, I'm one of three councils for GK Venture Partners. We are an investment firm, so in private equity, we do, we deal with mergers and acquisitions. We've been formed for about two years now, and we started off small, and since calling Parsip, making Parsippany our home, we have grown exponentially, and we, like Steve said, we started off occupying the first four, and now we have grown to approximately, approximately the entire building.
And the people come to work?
We come to work, haven't we?
In person.
So, Jamario, the reason we're here is that GK is proud of its space, it's proud of Parsippany, you want to advertise yourselves, okay? And pretty much, why do you want to have the GK, the logo on three facades? Explain to the board why you want that.
So we would like to make our name known in the Parsippany community, and we want to continue to grow in the township of Parsippany.
Do you have investors coming to your facility?
We do, we're all over the world.
You do?
Yes.
So, and is your investment team all located, is that your only site?
It is not, it is not.
What are the locations?
The way the building's configured, it makes sense to have the signs on the corners.
Yes.
And given, you know, it's, you need property, it has great street...
Right.
...fundages, which is why we're asking for three, and I agree with Mr. Holloway's report, there is two variances involved. One, as this board is well familiar, Parsippany limits sign height to 25 feet, but when the building is higher than 25 feet, it wouldn't make sense to put the signs at 25 feet. So we're asking for the height variance. The other variance is that Parsippany requires, if you're on two street fundages, you have two signs. We're asking for three because we have pretty much three street fundages, so we're asking for those released. Again, we have Michael Mark from Sinomatic to explain the destruction of the signs.
Marco Light.
I'm sorry?
Marco Light.
Michael, why don't you come on up? And now, in your packages, you'll see this, the spec and the design book. Michael, can you explain to the board what these, these letters are gonna look like construction-wise, how you're illuminating them, and if you know how you're gonna mount them on the building? Yeah, well, it's constructed of aluminum, plastic faces, LED lighting inside. It's blue acrylic, it's light, I actually have a sample. In your pocket? Do you want Mark to? I grabbed it on my way, I was like, this is the color.
Oh.
It's very translucent, lights up every night. Yeah, and you mount it according to the engineer's specs. Now, is there any concern that there might be, these lights might shine too brightly, or are they gonna be like blinding, or explain the illumination? It's subtle, I mean, it's, it's nice, it's not like a bright white where it's gonna be, you know, not look good, it's a nice color.
Can you dim the lighting if it's too bright?
No. Assume the worst case that, it is too bright after it's installed, what can you do to remedy that? I mean, you could put a diffuser in it, but I really doubt it's gonna be too bright. Would, would, would you be, if the board were to provide a condition and an approval saying that in the event the town engineer says that's way too bright, do something about it? Yeah, put the diffuser in.
How many signs per year do you install for various businesses throughout the state of New Jersey?
My God, thousands.
A guesstimate.
Thousands?
Okay, one, two, five?
What?
One, two, five? How many thousands?
Oh, how many thousands?
Just a guesstimate, okay, thank you.
And the, and like a standard, these are gonna be the, the dimensions are shown on the plans, but they're gonna be like channels boxes with acrylic... It's individual, yeah, they're individual letters, just flush mounted to the wall. And the LED elements mounted on the back of it? Yes, inside the letter. About four inches deep, five inches deep. And will people be able to see the lighting element, or will they just see the sign face? No, can't see the letter.
You need to speak up.
No, you don't see the, it's inside the letter.
And these letters are gonna be mounted on the building, and the building height's above 25 feet, so that's the variance you're looking at, because it has to be above 25 feet inside the building.
It's got ribbon windows, it's got that space.
Are the, is the light, are the lights gonna be on from dusk till dawn, or will they go off 11, midnight, whether?
Yeah, they wanted to put a photo cell on, so that's there.
So it'll stay on overnight?
Yeah, I mean, that could be altered, if they put a time clock in.
How far is it visible, like from each?
I don't think, Nancy, you could see them until you come up to the site.
Okay, that's...
Because it's really protected.
Yeah, it is, it's embedded in the business community. It really is, I don't, I don't see a residential threat whatsoever in regards to operation, quality of life.
Any other questions?
No, no other questions. Again, one of the fun things about this job is that, not only I get to come in and argue for variance, it's also to introduce new businesses in Parsippany. And this is an exciting one, again, I don't understand what they do.
Listen, I gotta tell you, we're filling office space in Parsippany. It doesn't have it much anymore, and we appreciate that.
I do have one more question, do you know the name of his sign company yet?
I was looking around.
That's why I would have shifted your record.
Marco Light.
There you go, all right.
Welcome to Parsippany, I think it's a...
Welcome. No more questions from the board, anything else you want to say? I was just gonna say, is there anything else you want to put on the record? Okay, any questions from the public? And if she gives you any grief, I think you're gonna have a problem, right?
There is no members.
No members of the public here for the record, so we'll dispense with the pros and cons. Would someone like to make a recommendation?
Yep, I'm voting for it.
Resolution, please.
Application 22:42, 11 Waterview Boulevard LLC, 11 Waterview Boulevard Block 421.4,